This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, April the first. Please stand for our invocation led by Chaplain Tony Legere, Mobile Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, Council. Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Bring you greetings from Mobile Police Department, strong and resolute, privileged to serve you today. Father, we pray to you in the strong name of your son, Jesus Christ. We thank you for a city like Mobile, Alabama, that humbles itself in times like today. We affirm our need for you is great. We pray that you'd favor us today, most of all, with your heart and your mind. May our hands be yours, our feet, our mouths. Would you use us, Father, to be a blessing to this community? I pray particularly that you bless our leaders, those who sit at these city gates. And we'll honor you, Father, in your son's name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
And good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everyone this morning. Welcome to our April 1st, 2025 meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, please at this time put on the off or the vibrated position, the off or the vibrated position. Interpersonated desiring to address the Mobile City Council must sign in indicating the ordinance, the resolution, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Interpersonate designed to address the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than 2:00 PM the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified pertaining to the city of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given a proper note to the City Clerk office and wish to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there will be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause or public outcry aloud. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of March 25th.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved.
Communications from Mayor Stimson.
Good morning. Good to see everyone this morning. Coming in to the auditorium on the desk out there are copies of this report, which if you didn't pick one up, I would suggest that you can pick one up. It's our Public Works Annual Report of 2024. Public Works is now actually three departments. It's Bill Mobile, it's Engineering Infrastructure, and Public Works. And what this report does is highlights the things that they accomplished in 2024. I would say this is a banner year for what was formerly Public Works. These are some of the statistics. Engineering oversaw 95 miles of road resurfacing, 13.7 miles of new or repaired sidewalks, and 1,037 new ADA ramp installations. Public Services collected 60,000 tons of garbage, 180,000 cubic yards of trash, 88,000 pounds of litter, and fixed 4,500 potholes. Bill Mobile, we conducted 29,000 inspections. That's an increase of 26%. We issued 22,000-plus construction permits. In Parks and Rec, we maintained 2,126 acres of land, 95 athletic fields. We have 31,500 plant beds. And believe it or not, listen to this one. In the Mobile Parks and Recs Department, out of the events that we sponsor, we had 386,000 people check in over the last year. I think that is absolutely phenomenal use of our facilities that I know that 10 years ago, it absolutely was not that way. And it's because of a couple of things. It's because of the money that's been invested in the parks, but it's also because of the programming that the team does with Parks and Rec. So a lot of statistics about what they do, but let's also remember why they're doing it. And there's a couple of things. One is that we endeavor every day to improve the quality of life and opportunities for our citizens, but also the men and women that are working in these departments. So many of them absolutely love their jobs, are passionate about what they've done, and they also live in trying to make it the best place to live, work, and play. Sherri Bouchette, Sherri, would you stand up, please? She wasn't expecting me to call on her, but because of Sherri, she's the one that put all of this together. So let's give her a big round of applause. She would say there are a lot of people that help her in our communications department, which is true. Jason is in here. Jason is up in the top, but Erin also has a lot to do with it. So thanks, everybody that has something to do with it. And when I turned around and looked at her, the first person I saw was Shonda. And y'all all know that Shonda's a force. And the things that happened in Parks and Rec to make it what it is today, Shonda had to turn the apple cart upside down to make some changes that are still being incorporated. So thank you, Shonda. Moving on, I want to talk about Mobile Police Department just for a moment. You may have picked up in the media that we had what we called Operation Azalea Trail, and where we were targeting some drug traffickers and drug activity on Azalea Road. This came to us as a complaint of activity that was being witnessed, and they had hoped that we would do something about it. We did something about it, although sometimes it takes a while for us to build the case. But there were 18 arrests, 2,000 grams of narcotics seized, 10 firearms taken off the streets. And again, it came from citizens complaining about drug activity in their neighborhood. So this is, I think, I hope is an example to you that we do listen. We don't condone it, but sometimes it just takes us a while to get all the facts together so that we can execute upon these kind of activities, so we can execute a drug raid on these activities. Thanks to MPD and all of our officers. My last comment has to do with the household waste event. It will be because of the weather last Saturday. We had to postpone it. The new date is this Saturday, April 26th. No, excuse me. The new date is not this Saturday. It's Saturday, April 26th. Location will be James Seal Community Center from 9:00 to 1:00. And again, that allows you to bring those items for us to handle that you should not be throwing out with your normal trash. Don't forget that today's April Fool's Day. There are a lot of tricksters out there. And I will say that I pulled a really good one on my children, and I thought a couple of them were going to have to go to the hospital this morning. But all is well once they realize it was April 1st. And I'm not going to tell you what I told them. Have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a proclamation, and I'm going to ask Ms. Laurie Roland if she wouldn't mind stepping up, and I will present the proclamation to you. This proclamation is in observance of Sexual Awareness, Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation to you. Whereas the Rape Crisis Center has been provided comfort and support to sexual assault victims in this community for 47 years, bringing awareness and education to the masses while offering high-quality assistance to those in need. And whereas the Rape Crisis Center provides 24-hour support to sexual assault victims and their families through direct services, preventions, education, and professional training to all residents of Mobile County. And whereas the Rape Crisis Center provides community education and prevention programs for youth and the community on sexual assault issues. And during 2024, the Rape Crisis Center and outreach and education staff presented 401 programs to 7,113 students and individuals in Mobile, Washington, and Clark Counties. And whereas the Rape Crisis Center serves a cross-section of people of various races, socioeconomic, and educational levels, in 2024, the Center provided 424 crisis phone calls, 214 hospital calls, 90 crisis intervention office visits, 759 follow-up victim support calls, court advocacy, friends/family support, clothing bank, dolls/bears given to child victims, 103 hospital clothing bags given to all adult victims, 79 emergency transportations provided, 94 law enforcement accompaniments, 151 information and referrals to community agencies. And now therefore, I Councilman Josh Woods and members of the Mobile City Council do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Sexual Awareness, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. We further call on all citizens to join us in committing the Rape Crisis Center for the services it provides to the community. Done this day, the City of Mobile, Alabama, on the first day of April 2025.
Thank you very much. On behalf of myself and all of our members from the Rape Crisis Center and Lifeline's Counseling Services, we would like to thank you for this resolution. The work that we do is very difficult. What we see and hear every day can be difficult, but knowing that we have the support of the mayor, the city council, and the community at large makes that work that we do much easier. So thank you very much.
Thank you all so much. Madam Clerk?
Adoption of the agenda?
So moved. Second. Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on May 3rd at the Bragg Mitchell Mansion, May 11th in Washington Square, June 28th in Mardi Gras Park, May 29th on Government Street, May 10th in Public Safety Memorial Park, April 14th, May 24th, September 22nd in Langin Park, and April 5th at the Grounds.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion.
Just one.
Madam?
Mr. President, on the one at the Grounds for April 5th, we are moving that to 9:00 AM. To start time.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fail passes.
Public hearings today. It's a public hearing to declare the structures at 314 Burton Avenue, 1826 Tolman Avenue, 1807 White Avenue, 1213 Chincopin Street, 753 South Dr. Thomas Avenue, and 559 Hickory Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
This open at the public hearing for these particular said items. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on these items? So just come down to the podium by stating your name.
My name is Tanisha Reed, and I-
Put the mic down for us, please. Thank you.
My name is Tanisha Reed. I currently own the property at 1213 Chincopin Street. However, I am unable to work on the house except for once a year, and that's when I get my taxes. So with that being said, all I can do is ask for help. But I don't want my house torn out if you please. I am working on it. I have worked on it, and I do have a permit. But I've told I have to get it renewed.
Okay. Councilman Carroll, let's keep you stopping to the individual earlier.
Yes, Mr. President. I spoke to the individual, and I spoke to Mr. Dawkins. She has had a permit for a year and has worked on the house sparingly with the income that she has. Unfortunately, it doesn't go as fast as some of us would want to go, which we see happen from time to time. But she is working on the property and improving it little by little. My suggestion was to have the permit reinstated, which gives you another year to work little by little to do that. But once it's reinstated, immediately let Mr. Dawkins' department know that you continue to work on it. I'm all in favor of anyone wanting to restore their property, especially in the bottom, in the campground. And as long as you're doing that, I'm all for you. So I'm going to ask, when it comes up for votes today, that we lay this over for 60 days in order for you to get the permit reinstated. And also to, you know, kind of let Mr. Dawkins know how you're meeting the obligation based on your financial situation that you're into. So he'll know in the future what's happening when this renews itself as you make progress on a home.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else present that would like to address the council on these particular said items? If not, these public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. To the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill is my name. I rise today to continue these conversations about these pertinent issues related to city business. Normally, I prepare remarks before coming here or either while sitting here, but instead, I just wanted to speak with you directly about these items. There was a quote this morning about watching out for the trickery, because today is April Fool's Day, but the way these meetings have commenced for so long, it doesn't have to be April for that to happen. I see that we have several things that have come up before, where citizens have requested to speak before this body, and they have been denied. And there have been rules that say the reason why is because there's not enough detail as to what it is that we're speaking on. But yet, just over a month ago, and I've wanted to lay off of this to see what the response would be, there was extensive detail sent to this body regarding the questions and inquiries pertaining to city business, and nothing has been done. So we're going to have to split these things up, because that is a lot of, that's a lot of information. I'll agree. Nonetheless, serving in this capacity, that should not be something outside of your purview and being able to handle. So let's look directly at these particular matters here that are on the agenda to speak on. Let's begin with these third-party law firms. Now, everybody down here knows about it, but a lot of people in the public do not. And because we don't have an impartial media outlet here in the city, a lot of that stuff is being suppressed from the content being able to get out to the public. I would even argue that some people probably paid these media outlets to prevent certain people from getting the message out to our neighbors, our fellow citizens. So we can argue that at another time. But what happens is when we retain these third-party law firms, we take away the opportunity for citizens to work directly with the city's legal department. So these third-party law firms, excuse me, these third-party law firms then take their own practices, their own agendas, and then it gets to the point where sometimes even tamper with communications meetings. The same way where lawyers are able to speak directly with one another, we should have that same autonomy with our city departments and city officials. When you have third-party law firms, you can't do that. Just like recently, we had Mel that was dealing with all of these land grabs, whether that's the former International Ministry Building, the Lab People Stadium, the Mobile Civic Center, where we're seeing these public housing units. Because we're bringing on these third-party firms to do this, the people here don't have to be held accountable. And so even with me, with challenging some of these matters myself, I was prevented from getting mail from both here, locally, and from state-based courting systems. And then when I made a formal complaint to the U.S. Postal Service, then out of the blue, the very next day, some of these documents start coming in. So we, of course, with the 180 seconds, you know we don't have the time to discuss all of this, but we needed to at least tender these things. Chapter 38 of the Mobile Municipal Code tells us that there's supposed to be an annual reporting to this body from Mobile Municipal Court. And I remember in the 2019 Public Safety Committee meeting, there was a 2009 notation at the top of the page, and Councilwoman Bestrich said, "Oh, is this a typo?" Because we haven't had this in this, no, they was like, "No, we just haven't done this since 2009." And so the thing is, now we had a committee meeting, and that was, we know the time, and not a lot. It will continue next week. Thanks for being on the floor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Sabrina Mass regarding Resolution 01-439.
Good morning, Sabrina Mass. Yes, I would like to speak about 01-439. It seems like there's a little confusion with myself and the community about this arena. Was this arena not a part of what's already been passed on the agenda for the Civic Center to be a part of the Civic Center? So does this mean there's going to be, have to be more funds put into the already passed agenda to fund the Civic Center? And are you guys trying to get the county to match what you're trying to put in now? Because there seems to be confusion, because the Civic Center had, they already had an arena. Why wasn't that already in the proposed budget for the Civic Center that just passed the budget? That's kind of confusing. So we're back, coming back saying, now you need more money to put an arena into the Civic Center when that should have been a part of the discussion and already put on the table with the original plan? So I would ask someone to please answer that question, because it seems there's a lot of confusion on this arena situation. Thank you.
I'm going to ask, Turner, can you just give us a short, if this is exactly what this is before the agreement on 01-439, just for the public knowledge?
Yes, Mr. President. This is an agreement between the city and the county as far as funding. There was not a, excuse me, definitive amount. There was negotiations that were ongoing, and it was continued until there could be a final agreement between both the city and the county as to the amount of money that the county was going to contribute. And that's what we have before the council today.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance is held over. 34014, ordinance to levy taxes for the tax year beginning October 1, 2025, and for successive years on all real, personal, and intangibles located in certain areas within the corporate limits of the city of Mobile and to accept, except from such taxes, other areas within the corporate limits of the city of Mobile.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over. 01-439, authorized intergovernmental agreement with Mobile County Commission for the Mobile Arena Project.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
I'd like to offer a substitution to this item to reflect the most recent agreement that's on file with the clerk's office that details a $7.5 million allocation from the county to be paid over the course of 10 years, with the first two years being $500,000 each.
Properly moving second in the discussion on amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Going back to original. Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
01-504, authorized agreement with Distinguished Young Women Foundation. 08509, approved purchase order to Long Lewis Ford for Ford Bronco SUVs. 08511, approved purchase order to North American Fire Equipment for fire hose. 09513, transfer funds from Project SDTO8 to grant Project GSTPOLDSH for grant match. 21514, authorized contract appeal Russell LLC for Spring Hill Court retaining wall improvements. 21515 and 21516, authorizing contract with James Donahue for History Museum of Mobile HVAC upgrades and for History of Mobile Museum chiller replacement. 47517. Do I need to take these separate?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take those.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
47517, considered the vacation of City Right-of-Way located on Farnell Lane.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
47518, consider a vacation fee as a condition of the vacation of City Right-of-Way located on Farnell Lane.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion.
Yes, sir. I'd like to amend this to waive the vacation fee.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion on amendment.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
Councilman Dave spent some time in pre-council this morning describing these vacation fees and that there are very limited circumstances where we should be waiving these fees. And in this particular case, as we've seen in other vacation fees, there's a trade here that we are gaining property for the property that's being vacated, and therefore, this meets that burden, in my opinion. So I will support it today.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Going back to original, another discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Vice President?
On 21-514, the contract for retaining wall on Spring Hill Avenue, Spring Hill Court. This is a project that I've been working with. We already voted. Oh, I, well, I'm going to talk about it now since I've started, I guess.
Can we go ahead and vote on 518 first?
Oh, sorry about that. I got ahead of myself. Never mind. Or behind. Never mind.
Discussion on 547-518. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass. Vice President, anyone go ahead?
I'll just do it during announcements.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Did we go back to the original?
We just voted on it.
We just voted on it.
Okay. All right. Consent resolutions, excuse me, consent resolutions being introduced. 37521 through 03553.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read, with the exception of 03-553, which will lay over for one week.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived. Madam Clerk?
37521, 522, 523, and 524, are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail liquor license to bottles up Mobile on Battleship Parkway for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premises only license to True High Class on Dolphin Island Parkway for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license to Big AS Bando Brunch Bar and Grill on Azalea Road and for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license to Holiday Inn Mobile Airport on Spring Hill Memorial Drive South. 40, 525, 526, 527, 529, and 530 are declaring the structures at 314 Burton Avenue, 1826 Tolman Avenue, 1807 White Avenue, 753 South Dr. Thomas Avenue, 559 Hickory Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. 46, 531 and 532 are honorarily renaming Euclid Street to Deacon Frederick E. Young Way and Oak Drive to Lucille Gonzalez Way. 58, 533 and 534 are authorizing removal of weeds, Group 1663, and assessing cost for repeat weed lean, Group 85. 60, 535, 536, and 537 are determining appropriations to People United to Advance the Dream Mobile, Inc., Mothers Involved Against Gun Violence, Boynton, Oak Society Serve a Public Purpose, and Approve Payment.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
48.
Mr. President? Carroll?
Before we move on, due to that, we had the honorary street naming today. I'd just like to recognize Van Young and the Waller family and all the contributions that you guys have done to the community and all the presence that you've had and the Deacons had over his life. Thank you all so much. I look forward to the ceremony that we're going to have, and thank you all for coming down today.
40, 528, declare the structure at 1213 Chincopin Street. A public nuisance and order it demolished.
Motion to lay over 60 days.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'll lay over for 60 days.
Resolutions being introduced. 01-538 through 60, 555.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of resolutions. 01-540, 08-542, 60-554, and 60-555, with the rest of these resolutions being laid over for one week per council rules.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk?
01-540, authorized agreement with Pelican Coast Conservancy. Zero-one-five-forty, authorized agreement with Pelican Coast Conservancy for conservation easement for property located off Todd Acres Drive and Cooman Road. Zero-eight-five-forty-two, approved purchase order to Harold's for fertilizer and herbicide for Azalea City Golf Course. Sixty-five-five-four, accept and adopt title six, two thousand twenty-five update for the wave transit system. Sixty-five-five-five, five fifty-five, adopt the Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan version four for the wave transit system.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
I want to extend a thank you to the administration for seeing this conservation easement through. There were times where I surely doubted that we'd ever get to this point, but I'm glad to see it on the agenda. I'm glad to see that y'all found a good partner in Pelican Coast Conservancy. And um, hopefully, this property will be uh, conserved forever, and you know, our general public will be able to, you know, realize the benefits of our, you know, wonderful natural landscape out there.
Another discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Call for public hearings, forty-one-five-fifty-two. Call for public hearing to consider the proposed modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at thirty-six seventy-four and thirty-six eighty Dolphin Street, scheduled May sixth.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings called.
Announcements.
Uh, District Five, Councilman Dave?
No announcements.
District Two, Councilman Carr.
No announcements.
District Six, Councilman Woods.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President. Um, just want to remind everybody, uh, on May the fifteenth at five-thirty, we'll have a District Six community meeting at a Woodridge Baptist Church, which uh, Schillinger and Cottage Hill area there. Um, want to remind that. I do want to offer uh, thanks or much thanks as well to the Mobile Police Department for the traffic enforcement that they're continuing to do on Cottage Hill. Um, I know that uh, that uh, lots, lots of tickets have been handed out. I greatly appreciate that, and heard a lot of um, thank yous from the community um, out that way as well. Because uh, again, um, I know a couple of weeks ago, there were some pretty serious wrecks, um, and I, I do appreciate the enforcement to try to uh, get, get that under control. And um, I did want to uh, to also take a moment um, to, to recognize a unfortunate and untimely passing uh, that, that occurred um, with uh, Dr. Ayed L. Sabah. Um, he's a, he was a director and a leader at the um, Islamic Center here in Mobile, Alabama. Um, he also was a professor at the University of Alabama in years past, a published scientific author in his field of engineering. And um, unfortunately, as I, I said yesterday, um, uh, his community, his family, and his friends um, had to realize his passing yesterday morning. So, um, I did want to send my condolences out to them, their community, um, uh, his family and his friends um, on the untimely passing of, of Dr. El Sabah. So, thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilman Woods. And District Four, Councilman Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, over the weekend, as we all experienced uh, the weather, uh, we sustained a tremendous amount of rain, rain to a level that there's not many stormwater systems in the country that can handle that sort of rain and keep it all within the ditches. Um, but when we do have these events, it provides us an opportunity to identify some of our shortcomings. And I got out and maybe not-so-smartly rode around in some of it just to see. Uh, and you can tell we've made some good progress, you know, over the years. And uh, you know, we've spent a tremendous amount of money trying to address some stormwater issues, but we still got a long way to go. And I just wanted to take a minute to encourage, you know, everybody on the city council and everybody in the city that when we look at allocation of money within our CIP and other capital funds, or after, or we're going after grant money, or whatever it is, that we really give uh, a lot of consideration to our stormwater system. It has the ability to completely destroy our community if we don't manage it correctly. That's it, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Woods. I mean, Reynolds. District One, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. This past weekend, I had the opportunity um, to um, go out um, different places in the community. And one place was, uh, we celebrated a new business in District One. Um, Paulman is, is now on O'Shea Road. Um, and so we will be highlighting different businesses in, in our district. So if you would like to highlight your particular business, send out um, a message to councilone@cityofmobile.org. Um, also, on April the twelfth, we will um, have a Easter egg hunt celebration at the Dodge Community Center at the park. So come out, invite your family. I'm part of City Mobile, and I'm part of sponsoring that event as well. Uh, but come out and let's have a great time. And then on April the fifteenth, we will have our crying community meeting at New Shallow at six PM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'd like Mr. Penn, Vice President Gregory, District Seven.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, to go back to what I uh, thought I was talking about at that point at the right time is the Spring Hill Court retaining wall resolution that we passed. This is something I've been working with the residents over there. There is a line of sight issue, and thank you to Nick and all of the team, and of course, the residents who have been patient to get this going. And we have been assured by the contractor that uh, he will get to this during spring break. Doesn't mean that the whole project will be completed during spring break, but hopefully, the, the heaviest and biggest part of the project uh, will be finished during spring break. But just look for some, some traffic slowdowns on Spring Hill Avenue. Uh, coming up, uh, we will have the um, Chocolate Festival on Saturday, April twelfth at the grounds. Uh, I get to be a judge this year, so come on out and join us for all types of chocolate varieties. There'll be plenty of vendors there selling and uh, giving out samples that will be at the grounds starting at ten o'clock. And it all, the proceeds all go to benefit the Penelope House. Coming up on April fourteenth, we will have the Pops Symphonic Band at Langen Park. We will be under the newly renovated amphitheater at Langen Park. It starts at seven o'clock. And of course, that is located on Ziegler Boulevard, right at uh, right next door to the tennis center. So come on out and enjoy symphonic pops. And then coming up, I'll be joining Councilman Woods for a combined meeting on uh, April twenty-ninth. And we will be speaking with the residents of District Six, who are moving, some of them back into District Seven, and then some of them will be new residents of Seven coming up. We will be at the Hampton Inn in Providence Park, and that starts at six o'clock PM. Postcards are going out. So we'll also be putting some reminders on social media. That's all from District Seven. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Vice President Gregory, and uh, greetings to the citizens of District Three. Um, this coming Thursday, I will be joining some members of the administration at the Revelation Missionary Baptist Church for the Town Hall Meeting on Gun Violence. That will be on April the tenth, this coming Thursday at six o'clock PM. Uh, this town hall will be an excellent opportunity for mobileians to voice their concerns and learn more about the local initiative focused in reducing and preventing gun violence. Again, that will be this coming Thursday. Also, uh, Councilman Penn, the best Easter egg hunt in the city will take place on Saturday, April the nineteenth at the Gear Yard Elementary School, especially inviting all the kids of District Three and really kids throughout the City of Mobile to come and collect thousands of eggs that we do have planned for the kids. Will be plenty of food, fun, and entertainment, of course, the Easter Bunny. Again, that will be at uh, Gear Yard Elementary School from three to five o'clock PM on April the nineteenth. And also on Tuesday, April the twenty-second at six o'clock PM, we will be having a community meeting for the Dog River Community and the Morningside Community. That would be held at the Morningside Elementary School. And again, that will be at April the twenty-second at six o'clock PM. We don't have anything from the administration.
Motion to adjourn.
Properly moving second in the discussion.